Let's move this up to 911. Jay, we're waiting when they get down.
I met with Rick, Gary, Sarah, and Amanda a week ago. Was it a week ago? And they proposed merging the jailers and the dispatchers. Cross train them a little bit. And we're gonna leave Herschel and Dan as full-time jailers and where they're at. Merge everybody else, cross train everybody else. In that way it'll cut down on the employee at night, right?
Yeah.
Sure. What about during the day?
Well, part of the problem right now is retention.
So many inmates.
And so many inmates. Retention is one of the biggest problems. We can't hire anybody. We can't seem to be able to hire anybody. Nobody wants to work. Dispatch was having a hard time. No, they weren't having a hard time. The jail was having a hard time. So if we could cross train all of them, our jailers into the dispatch, most of the dispatch girls are all already jailer trained anyway. Then we could take some of our jail staff and move it over to dispatch so that on the nights that we don't have coverage, we would actually have coverage.
Then they had a little meeting, was that Friday? She called me.
Yeah.
Wanted to know, it was right after lunch. They just had a little meeting, all the jailers, all the dispatch, because they had some questions and concerns. And I met up here with them. They're all pretty well on board. I don't see anybody that's not on board for this. They all think it's a good idea. Rick has said that if we would merge this, that he would drop the idea of a pickup. He'd just skip that. And then we could bump their wages up a little more because they are way underneath everybody else in the courthouse considerably. And he would also give his sales tax towards making this pay raise. And by taking that one person off of nighttime, it'd actually help some of that too.
How are you gonna do that with payroll?
How are you gonna do with payroll?
I mean, are you just gonna move certain people to sell sex all the time? Because I mean, you can't move his money from sell sex into his payroll account, which he has people that he pays out of his payroll. I just need to know how you're gonna do it. I don't need to know until the end of next month.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna...
Matter of fact, just think, so just move some over to the...
Okay. However it works out.
And what are we gonna... I mean, are you gonna give me pay claims to tell me what you're gonna bump everybody to?
We can.
Yes.
You have to.
Yes.
That's not a... That wasn't a question, that was a statement.
We're just discussing, trying to figure it out. We don't know every little way in and out of this.
But we will know by payroll next week, the next month.
Yes.
When you're talking about merging, are you gonna pay him out of 911 and pay him out of jailer so they can get... Which is fine with me.
Actually, what we first talked about was 911, we're still gonna keep their budget.
Yes.
And yes, and the Sheriff's Department's still gonna keep their budget.
Yes.
So you're gonna have people that will get paid two paychecks then?
No.
No. If they're jailer, if they were hired as a jailer, they were gonna stay on Rick's budget. And if they were hired as 911, they'll stay on Sarah's.
Right.
Okay. So even though they're cross training and stuff, we don't have to worry about them having 40 hours here and then some individuals will be in over time.
It'll be like it used to be where...
At one time, originally, this was all merged.
Right. We were all together before.
But it was all one number. Now you don't have one number, you have multiple numbers.
Right. I had my own budget even then.
Right.
So...
But we still had, I mean...
But some of the 911 people were being paid out.
Right. And they were getting two paychecks then?
No.
If they work in your department and they work in his department, they have to get two paychecks unless you're gonna pay them all out of yours or he's gonna pay them all out of his.
Be like the worst, we're part of them, we're paying out of one budget.
That's what I'm saying. Then no matter where they're working at for you, you're gonna pay them, no matter where they're working at for him. He's gonna pay you. I just wanna make sure I'm clear because I don't wanna call you at 6:00 in the morning.
But that's gonna be really clear.
I mean, right now you're...
Which accounts.
Yes. That's... Well, something we're gonna have to work out is that.
That's fine.
So you guys are all okay.
And Gary is gonna oversee this whole deal. Gary's gonna be the one in charge. He's gonna be the... Because he's already running the jailers. He's just gonna be overcharging the whole deal. And Gary has his gloves and his vest.
The only thing I was looking at was being a liaison between the dispatch and Mike, really. I just think it'd at least ease some stress and some pressure. I mean, if you guys are okay with it, that's all right, mate.
Long as somebody's staff's not in the middle of it. Somebody's gotta be in charge. You're not gonna have to be Gary in charge.
Yes, I'm Gary.
So if I go with it and we get the predictor to work out, I even all that.
I'm just throwing this out there. You know you're gonna cause nine kinds of chaos. Okay. I'm just throwing that out there. I'm gonna say, go see you guys when they come yelling at me.
That's fine.
When I'm in Walmart shopping and I get 14 phone calls.
You're not gonna have to worry about it.
Well, everybody else in this courthouse is making considerably more than that.
I agree.
So it's only fair, making it fair.
They're not wanting to get them more.
I totally agree, but I'm just saying, it's gonna cause five kinds... I mean, it just does. I mean, it just does. I'm just making sure everybody's okay with me sending them to someone else because...
Send them to me.
Not my department. Okay, yeah, I'll be the payroll claim board on every employee that has change.
I know.
They cracked the windows.
And it's gonna be effective by 15 minutes. The 22nd of August, like back, there's not that you're gonna have. I mean, we can talk about that later.
We can hash it. Do we go back to the 22nd so it'll all be on this bus or we go to the following, this coming month?
I would do the next month, just so that we've got time to get it all sorted out.
The bugs. Well, that way we'll have, most likely we'll have the budget drawn and everybody will know where everybody's at.
Yeah. So what do you need?
Just need a motion.
Need a motion to do it? I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Gary, you're gonna be my best friend. Yeah, you won't answer my phone calls because, you know, you've been pretty bad here a little while.
Shh. If you don't answer, just call 911.
How did you get it out?
You might think of Gary as, because there's different levels when they have their training and not training.
Yeah.
So yes, I'll keep that in mind.
And that makes me definitely wanna work on the pay until they get their training gives them.
Yeah.
So we can not get set up.
You have a whole another month now. Worry about that if you're not gonna find out.
I'll forgive that.
I'm moving it from there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll warrants?
I think everything was signed good.
Probably wanna open this. Okay.
Do you want your payroll and all? Can I put this title down?
Yeah, let's do it.
I mean, you're already...
There it's done.
Yeah, it's done. I just need a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Seems J is just... Sorry, I just...
All right. We'll move down here and... Oh, open 12 month bids.
I forgot.
I found the Lex board.
Grab one out of the box. I'm sorry.
I wish it would sit in, right?
It worked out a road north of Hammer, ain't it? Michael Dogma.
Really?
Right there at the water tower going east. And them big dicks, they cut the road out last night.
I got that fire call last night, 6:60, 9:11. Luke called, so that's our pastory that you rent on. I played it out all summer.
I just got a deal where...
We could see the flames and stuff from my house.
In the tree.
Yeah. It was probably, I'd say it was probably two, two and a half miles east of us.
It's on six, six.
It's like an electricity bling.
So I had a run out there that's across from Wilbur.
Oh, on the old...
Yeah.
I'm sure we had some blast with it.
I'll give it to you later. Okay. Or we've got a month to be able to work all this out.
We're ready to.
See y'all later. Thank y'all.
They're gonna be all different kinds. Just make sure that they're not rise on that.
Midwest Printing Company.
Second page and then you come over to somebody.
This is new to me. I haven't done this before, so I'm...
Maybe your chair is gonna pile up there and talk to us. That way you're real good camera view.
Just kind of spread out.
Royal printing. And it is not rising. See attached.
Yeah, it's on the back page, yeah. I'm saying that's...
Yeah.
The five days are numbers.
Yeah.
They can not go on there.
They don't ever. They're all just individual, so they have so many different choices. It just bounces?
Yeah. I know, like on big election years, like when we have all the state lines, like this year, the state uses Royal. So we just go with Royal to make it easier. But next year, it's just gonna be us. So these are Midwest here, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would say go with Midwest. We haven't had any problems with either one of them. I think it's just a matter of convenience.
Are they lower on some kinds of...
Yes, they are. There's quite a difference.
Make a motion, we're gonna Midwest.
Aye.
All in favor?
I don't know what happened here.
Yeah, we're at six, six in the jungle. Putting down a tree.
I bet you it burned on doors.
I mean, that's not me. I didn't even look at them. I just, you have the sticky note on top of each one of them, so I just...
Probably another tree gotta get there.
I have to keep pushing. Okay. I mean, if they want to step over them, they'll copy around the corner.
They really don't want to be there. That'd be fun to do. It's hard to pick that much corner. Or you're turning the way over to them.
I can't remember.
I'll make a copy of this page.
Okay. Okay.
All right. I like that. Big old tree.
I was like, what they're gonna be doing, it's like the smell of...
And you want it open?
I'll bring the cactus up here and clear that tree for you.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I'm gonna take my vacation that week.
There my woman's got weird, weird one down here trying to call ya. The world is gonna come.
I wanna be on vacation that week. I want your chain in your pocket.
You'll be headlocked to the tree.
That was that little headlock in my office. Let me figure out.
Mrs. Bernard, you're gonna headlock herself to the tree.
No, 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 no. You only have four plus three. You also welcome them.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Have a good one.
You too. Have you spelled her last name?
Janie T. Z.
Yeah. Heather Finer. Stephanie. I'm sorry. I said it wrong.
It is a... Massive.
Don't you hold a little bit more?
Pretty close. I don't remember how many it said, it was huge.
Like 16 slices.
I can't imagine. Six slices is all?
Six?
But I mean, the thing was huge.
If he makes a bread, too.
Did it mine? Dump the flour and the salt.
Bake and slice and toast.
Wednesday is next size.
Okay. If anything changes on this.
It just... I'm gonna send over the holiday home something back.
Did you not see my notes on the door already? I'm so impressed on myself. Oh, it's about Friday.
Three day weekends. Doing four days to that little boy.
You better stay awake, man, or you'll turn out like a man.
I know, that's what I'm hoping. Damn, it's my favorite. I'm trying to think, what am I, a chocolate lover? I'm not a chocolate lover.
You didn't know what chocolate was.
Yeah, you probably never know what your mom will...
I am not gonna be supportive, so you'll probably never know what chocolate is.
Get him a note.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Monthly officer for court.
Judge. Leaves still look better.
Favor?
Aye.
I will be from the assessor, District One, District Two, and District Three don't have to sign any of them at all.
Yeah, we're there, it's been busy. All in favor?
Aye.
Road crossing permits. Request to change First Deputy of District Two to Laura Dugger.
Sorry, Jay, did not intend to move your name over. I'm not sure why I did that. I noticed it on, before I printed Jennifer's, sorry. Why is that way over there? I guess.
Request to change First Deputy for the assessor to the assessor. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Got two private property easements for District Three.
There's two copies of each one of those.
I don't wanna be behind.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And District Two has four of them.
I don't have copies of those.
Okay. That's the last two bridges that we approved as the easements. Those are the bridges. Rick is starting to work on them. I'll make a motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You know the day we get there. Check my laundry on the day to the county papers.
Are these mine?
After laboring.
I can't believe it happened.
Yeah, it starts on the 7th.
Two old dogs laid down on this. Got a car on it. The 99 dogs got that leak in it.
Can we add Wendy Ford to the list? I was actually over there Saturday and they requested that.
Look them over again and make sure that... You don't want it to change or not.
Now, when I was talking to the Ford dealership over there, the only thing, I'll have a question, because we put like a four cylinder turbo or equivalent. Well, they don't have a four cylinder turbo. They got a six cylinder turbo. But equivalent, so it's what I told them to. But I just wanna make sure before we send them out.
I put this out there for three weeks.
I put this out there for three weeks, so it'll come back in on the sixteenth, and we'll open them on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Just sign here on the front page of them, look at those, that's the page of specs, so. But yeah, I'll add Wendy to it.
I appreciate that. Right here.
Yeah.
Copy there, don't try to make the date.
Yes, they're gonna need to state, state that list.
I'm making a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, YF twenty-two, emergency management performance subgrant application. Tell us what you got.
This is just the annual application, so they run their fiscal year, like the federal government, from October first till the end of September. So, every August, we do this for the new year coming up. So, we're already in the current year, and we've got one more quarter to complete, which is our fourth quarter. So, what I sent you is a blank copy. This is a, um, copy of this, so if you, if anybody wants to have it, take it, not take it, do whatever. This is the checklist, and then this has all of the, the stuff that I have to fill in with it, and then also the pieces that are part of what I would say the, uh, the core part of the application. So, this has all of our subgrant information on it. Um, I list myself, and then I list Sarah as a backup, in case you needed to do any quarterly reporting for me, in case I wasn't here. She'd still go through the same method of getting you to sign those quarterly, uh, pieces of paper, you've signed them in the past, Marvin, and then you sign them every quarter on the twenty-five hundred. But, um, and so, that's what this is.
What I understand, this grant is a ten thousand dollar grant, but you have to spend it every year, right?
They don't require that you spend that money every year. They want you to spend it on things, but they also don't want you to just spend it to spend it. So, it's there for our emergency services to use, any of that money can be used for whatever we...
Well, I know the fire department is looking, trying to raise money to, uh, buy geohandling that goes on their clothes, so when they enter buildings and burning houses, and I didn't know if that was something...
Yeah, we could definitely look at using some of those funds for that, and then all the fire chiefs, all, I've told them multiple times, let me know if there's something that you wanna use this money for. We've used it for radios in the past, for, uh, the sheriff's office, we didn't get a whole lot, we got that one that Gary's unit had. Um, we've used it to help with preparedness stuff with touch by the community, which, um, and it's, it's here to be used for, right now it offsets emergency management. Um, so, I, instead of charging things out of M and O, they come out of this performance grant, and so that helps, uh, give back money back into our accounts and whatnot, so. It definitely helps with that, and has with years, you know. Um, each year it's an application, so the state has an ability to refuse that application. So, when I go in and I submit everything, um, I'm still at the mercy of the state on whether or not they're gonna approve us or deny us. So, uh, the first year we went for it, it was denied, and then the second and third year it's been granted, and then, so this year, they'll look at all the stuff that we send, um, which has that long list of stuff, and then they'll make a determination on that. Um, some E M, E Ms use it to offset their payroll, that they may have a second person, and so they'll use that, not that that would be here, but... So that, what I'm trying to say is that some of that money could be used for that kind of thing, too, as well, if we, we saw the need, do you know what I mean, Mike?
I do.
So, um, it's, 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 it's for whatever we can, can use it for, as far as preparedness, recovery, anything that's in that emergency side of things, so, absolutely.
Okay, I just know that that's what their meaning is right now.
Yeah, no, I hadn't heard anything like that, but absolutely, so I, again, I will, but, I don't, you know, I will definitely reach out to them, um, and let them know that. So, um...
Questions?
I think it's just two places, but, and I, Lydia, you can keep the original of all this if you want.
I, I just need a copy. But I don't really want all of it. So, you discussed with me, or like...
There's an extra copy, she don't want really original, so this is, this is the front copy that's taken out to make it a little...
Do you want that copy? If you don't want that copy, I'll keep the copy. Thank you. I gotta have something, yes, ma'am, I'm excited.
You can one play.
Yeah, I'm just, I'll still need a copy of that one, though, I need a well, see.
What's wrong, David?
Is that not in this, though?
This is just a copy of those two together.
Okay.
So, this is page one through whatever, and that's the extension.
I just don't wanna make her make an extra copy.
Nope, you can put that all together, what you that has to line.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under proceedings?
I'll move it with Gary.
All right, so I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.